Well, let's start on our agenda. You've got a copy of minutes in your meeting, like we always had, and you all got the email, which we always have.
Which we always have. So, any changes, corrections?
See no changes or corrections, I'll make a motion, we approve the amount as per session.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
On favor?
That's a long pass now.
Yeah, it is.
She likes it this way. It lasts for better anyways.
End of month, July 2023, $31,497.26. August 17th, meeting, $231,034.87. And rural development bond interest, $42,439.92.
I make a motion to accept the claims and warrants.
On favor?
Aye.
Payroll warrant for July 7th, 3rd, 10th, 17th, in the amount of $31,574.99.
Moved, we approve the payroll warrants for the date stated for $31,574.99.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Bank reconciliation for the end of the month, July 2023. The town, $1654,954.39. Payroll, $2,807.28. And customer deposits, $36,280.
I make a motion, we approve the bank reconciliation numbers for the month of July 2023.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we've got one billing adjustment for $644.06. Three water-treatment adjustments previously approved.
Make a motion to approve them if all the paperwork's intact.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
And you've got one one-meter adjustment for $32 even.
I move we approve a one-meter adjustment, $32.
Second. On favor?
Aye. I think that's it. I know.
We won't charge any extra for your exercise.
I'll have to move to that end, it'd be easier. Another table. I have to move to that end, it'd be easier. Another table maybe.
Could they push you to the other side?
Yeah. Would be easier though.
Okay, Dustin?
I guess we'll start. Good news, I'm gonna ask everybody this time, so. The other good news is, we got an email today, I guess good and bad news. Email today from SRF that they're willing to provide a forgivable loan, we'll call that a grant. But it's only $5 million of the 9.3, 9.2, 9.3 million dollars of the project cost. So obviously that doesn't cover the entire project. We'll need to get with, what's the right guy? Pat. Get with Pat and discuss how that impacts rates, potentially impacts rates, I should say. And see what that overall does. Sorry, I'm so fast on that. This is a little different. This is, we had a meeting with, down at the wastewater treatment plant on Tuesday? Monday? Whatever day it was. Earlier this week, with Paul was there, we had U-Max, we had Troy Ellis and Bruce down there, Eric Smith and myself. We just wanted to kind of, oh, and John was there as well. Just kind of go over how the wastewater plant was gonna act and respond to increased flow from the water treatment plant. Sludge is obviously a problem, we went over that at nauseam down there a little bit. Liquid sludge process is non-existent right now, you guys are hauling, you're stacking solids there in the primary tanks, which has overflowed, not overflowed, that's probably not the right term, has carried over into your recirculating tanks. I think he said that there's five feet-ish of sludge in your recirculation tanks at this point, and the goal in your recirculation tanks is zero inches, and you guys have five feet-ish, which seems to be part of the problem, I guess. Sludge is getting through the primaries, getting into those tanks and getting into your recirculating beds. We kind of discussed first, kind of first action needs to be get that sludge out of the recirculation tanks as quickly as possible, so that you don't send any more sludge into the recirculating beds. Because it's kind of like your septic, you guys know septic tanks anymore, but like septic system sludge, you send it to the finger system and fouls it out, which is kind of what happened years, a couple of years ago at this point now. But we think with the new sludge, the improvements that we have, that, what's the company, Blue River Technologies has proposed with the geo-bagging system, it'll take sludge from the phosphor settling tank, pump it into a sludge holding tank, add polymer, and mix it for lack of a better term, and dump it in those geo-bags, let it settle out, we'll get that sludge out of there, so we're not sending any more sludge up to the head of plant than what you already have. Pretty confident that that'll take care of your problem, long-term wise, but the maintenance that needs to happen is keeping those primary tanks and those recirculating tanks as clean as possible. And the easiest way that we could think of was put those primary, the big concrete primary tanks on an annual cycle, just make sure they get cleaned once a year. And think if you keep that clean, if you do the project that we've got shown down there, keep those pumped out annually, then you shouldn't have to clean out the recirculating tanks again after this, aside from, you know, accidents or failure, equipment failures and things like that. I guess just the one thing to note is, the operator for U-Max, he was kind of, he likes a mechanical plant. Obviously, a mechanical plant has its benefits, you can adjust, you can, with the plant you guys had, you just, water goes in and water goes out, you can't adjust anything, really. You can turn things on and off, but you can't make adjustments like you can in a mechanical plant. But what you save in that is you pay for them. So, I got back to the office and I ran a quick number, the mechanical plant would be about eight, at least eight million right now. Obviously, that's a lot of money compared to what you guys need to spend down there, south of a million. So, that's kind of how we got, because it's, I don't want to say this got the situation, but that's how we have the recirculating plant, because that same analysis was done 2009 now at this point, a long time ago now. Looked at mechanical plant versus the recirculating plant, then there's maintenance from a pumping in that aspect, but you have power costs and long-term equipment costs that are associated with a mechanical plant that you don't have with this one. So, the trade-offs were analyzed back then, the results are pretty much the same as they are now, is, everything has its pros and its cons, and the biggest con with a mechanical plant is the capital cost.
When the water plants up and operate, that water going down there, to me, will help that operation, because they're gonna be a larger flow or clean water?
That, that water will be mostly, I'll call it clean, because it doesn't have, it's not gonna have true sludge. The stuff that comes from the water treatment plant will be readily, readily, can't say the word, easily settable?
Redly.
Readily, I can't even say it. So, once it hits those primaries, it'll want to, you can think of it more like a sandy, it's gonna have iron, manganese, and the nitrates in it, it'll want to just settle out as it hits the plant, hits that primary. So, it won't want to, your lighter solids or whatever getting through the plant, it won't want to pop back up in the primaries and go into the pumps. So, I don't think it's gonna want to do that, like your current sludge is. That light, fluffy sludge is what's the problem right now. And then, the sludge bags will take care of that, though. That polymer binds with that, drops it out in those bags, and off the landfill it goes. Anybody have any questions about that portion before we talk more about the money stuff?
I'm just trying to understand this, so.
And I'd love to do that, I saw.
I know, well, I'm absorbing, so. So, you still think the bag system, we need the bag system?
Absolutely.
And some other modifications. And then we also need to make sure we're cleaning the sludge out of the primary tanks on an annual.
Yeah, if I would, I'd talk to John, like just set a date, and, you know, you pick whatever it is, and you call it August 1st every year, we're gonna make the phone call and get those scheduled or first date, or you pick whichever.
Mind it all along and do it whenever.
After, after you do that for a couple of years, you have to say, a year, these things are pretty clean, after a year, we can, let's call it 18 months and change our schedule.
Or nine months if it's.
Or you move the other way if it's becoming a problem.
Dustin, I had talked to, well, I talked to Eric, I think, actually, because going through SRF to ask for reimbursement for these expenses, we're gonna have to make sure we dot a few i's and cross a few t's as far as how we procure the labor materials and services. So typically on a project, like the building of building or something, we have to get this. Now, I talked to Eric a little bit, there are some exceptions for, like systems. And, and he and I, now, we didn't go all the way into, because I wanted to come up here, I knew they were coming up here, me, that we think we can make a legitimate argument that the system we want, Blue River's the one that does that. So, there's no reason for us to go out and get three quotes, because there's not gonna be three quotes for this system, there's one system. Did you guys talk about that?
We talked about it a little bit.
Somewhat.
Not with the whole, I don't remember if everybody was standing there, because I kind of brought it up, I don't want to push Blue River, I'm gonna use the wrong words, that geo bag, that Blue River, is it Blue River?
Yes.
Is that right? We don't want to push them out, because they've done a lot of labor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As far as they've been super helpful, us and the town. And we can essentially sole-source Blue River for the geo-bagging system that they've got kind of planned out at this point, because Blue River, the geo, geotextile tube bags are, the watering bags aren't proprietary, the way that they do it is, if that makes any, like, I can call, I can get on Alibaba and order 500 geo bags, not gonna work like what they're providing, because the bag is just a portion of the system, the flocculator that mixes the polymer, the polymer injection pump, how it's all set up, that whole process is what's proprietary. So, we can word this spec, you know, specifications to say, it's gotta meet these requirements, and the way that we do that, nobody else is going to be able to meet those requirements the way it's set up and worded. And that's not to exclude anybody, that's just to make sure that we stick with the product and the process that everybody has seen, everybody's comfortable with at this point. We don't want some other, just run of the, you know, somebody is like, I can do that, and I bought on Amazon, I bought a flocculator, and I got on Alibaba, and I bought a bag, and let's do this, we can do for half that. We want to make sure you guys get a good product, get a good process that has support. You know, they can provide the product, but they can also provide support ongoing to you guys as we get the process implemented.
That, I wanted to ask about that, too.
I had the same question, because I, I don't want, we've done, engineers have opened up different processes before, and we've never heard of anybody else, but then all of a sudden it gets mid-time, and they have a price from somebody else, and it's, I got the parts, I mean, it's, you drew it up, I got the parts.
The, I didn't read that word for word, but did we talk about the auger system that was going on the ad?
We did not, I was gonna include that in the letter, but then I got the number, the price, or the SRF's contribution, we'll call it, to the project, and that wasn't included, what we submitted to SRF, can always be added, it's not a big deal to add it, because we actually, so I can't remember if it was this week or last, late last week, we got, SRF's not approved the PER yet. They, I don't know if anybody was copied on the email from SRF, they sent over a bunch of comments, revisions, requests to the PER, some of it was more data on the nitrates, some of it was, please be aware that this is, gotta be BABA compliant, it's gotta be, you gotta have your audits, and all this other stuff, thumbs up, no problem. A couple of the comments were related to, you guys have manganese in your water, which we knew, we knew that, so everything's ready for manganese. One of their comments was, can you please break out, let me see how this is working, can you please break out how much of the project is to treat manganese? Well, that's weird, I mean, it's, it's water treatment, we're gonna take out, most of it's gonna take out everything.
Ninety percent.
Well, it's not everything. Can take out all of these different constituents and everything, but the pretreatment will clean the water before it hits that, and it'll treat manganese, iron, and the basic, big stuff. But manganese is considered an emerging contaminant through the US EPA, but nitrates is not, which is weird, because you can, your water can be black from manganese, you can still drink it, because it's not unhealthy to drink manganese at these levels, but nitrates isn't. So, we're gonna break it out, and that could potentially, once we fill this out, send it back in, hopefully next week we'll get all of, it's quite a few comments, this is a little more in-depth review than they've done in the past, so it might take us a little longer to get back. So there's potential that by submitting that back in, they'll come back and say, you're now eligible, and the letter says that can make you eligible for emerging contaminant funding. So, it'd be interesting to see, once we get it submitted back in, and we say, $2 million, I don't know the number off the top of my head, is for treatment of manganese, if they come back and say, hey, there's another $2 million, or if they just say, we're still stuck at five, or, to see how that kind of plays back in.
But won't you, there's a pre-filter for the RO?
Yes, so we have this large.
So, that's probably gonna be where your manganese comes out of.
That's, we're gonna make the argument, we would like to make the argument, that, that a lot of it is for manganese. I mean, I'd like to change the name of the project to manganese treatment. We're just picking up the nitrates along the way, but that'd be a little dishonest, but we can make, reasonably make a comment like, your pre-filter, your high-service pumps can be attributed to that, because without the high-service pumps, you can't treat any of the manganese, and they're required for the RO system, but.
And then the pre-filter will have to be backwashed?
Yep.
And that water's gonna be, have manganese in it and this color?
Yes, and it'll go to the plant, and, so, we have, we need to talk internally about how, because you can't just break it off, because it's not like we have one train that is solely for nitrates and one train that is solely for manganese. It's, it's an all or nothing type scenario, so we'll have to talk internally about how we're comfortable putting our name on something and saying this, this is legit and this is true. We don't want to be dishonest, but we don't want to shortchange the town on potential funding either, so just, we're thinking about it, I guess, that's the short answer. We're still analyzing how the best to handle that is.
And then, the other, the only other question I had that I was unclear on.
Sorry, John, I didn't answer your question, it's not in there yet, I got sidetracked. It's not in there yet, but it can certainly be added in, depending on how this funding kind of shakes out, I guess.
When I spoke to the gentleman from Blue River, he said, you know, basically the first course of action should probably be, find out where you want to put it, put a building With the funding stuff, that's where I have questions as far as, is there only certain ways that we can bid this, do this?
Yes, so, the whole, we'll have to bid the project to some, we can't just get it on paper and call it Blue River and say, let's go. It still has to be bid, because of the federal requirements and how that lays out, I guess, because it's gonna, I don't know the dollar amount, but I know once, Scott, you'll have to correct me, if we get above, what, 150, we have to publicly advertise, just like any other big, larger projects, we put it in the paper, we put in the specs, and we get it. My guess is, Blue River will not bid the project as a general contractor, because they don't, they won't do the entire project. They want that very niche portion of it, which is fine. A Graves, who did the Graves, no, BNT did the last one, right? A BNT or Graves Construction or others that can bid as a contractor, they'll hire out that portion to Blue River, they'll hire out the building to, I think the last one was Rogers, so they're just sub it out, they'll just be an construction manager at that point. But the building will have to follow, the steel's gotta be proofed, it's American iron steel, so even though it's made of metal, you know, metal siding, and the stuff has to be rolled, it'll be rolled in Indiana somewhere probably, because you ship it much further and it's super expensive, they just have to have the stamp that says it's American iron, the fasteners have to be American iron, so there's all these little hoops that the contractor has to jump through to get that done, so all kind of have to go at, at one time in order to be.
So I guess where I was going with is, a fairly simple building's probably gonna come at a fairly substantial cost, just because of the red tape.
We, this is where we, our philosophy's gonna differ slightly from Blue River's. Blue River's gonna say, has to be in a building, the whole thing has to be in a building. We've done plants where the, the bag itself and container are outside, the little, the injector and all that stuff are inside, heated, so you have a small building that's heated, you'll probably like the other one that we did on the last project, different location, and then you have a concrete pad with a drain that does this, so when it gets cold outside, it's like super cold, like crazy below freezing, you have to disconnect some hoses and stuff and let it drain, but the bag doesn't drain, but your hoses and stuff will drain out. That's the cheapest option, because there's other options that you can have it outside, heat-traced, and the whole nine yards, that gets expensive compared to the building. The problem with having it in a building, that we've seen, and we're open to recommendations from Blue River also, is that if you just put it in a metal building, the metal becomes susceptible to the, the gases that are formed with wastewater, there's not a ton in there, but the metal will slowly corrode, and the metal's not gonna last as long as it would at, at your shop at your house or something like that. So, one option is to do, CMU or concrete up, four feet, pick a number, six feet, whatever it is, that way you can hose it down somewhat frequently, get all that to the drain, and keep all those, the gases and splash, and just all the other stuff that's yucky with wastewater, get it into the drain and take care of that metal. And then another option, option, part of that, it needs to be heated, so that it doesn't freeze, or otherwise the building's not really there for anything other than keeping the rain off of you. You have to, once we put a building up at a wastewater treatment plant, we have to have so many air exchanges per hour, because that area just becomes hazardous, hazardous, loose term, explosion, then you gotta worry about explosions, so you have to have so many air exchanges, we have a heater in there that runs to keep the temperature at 45, we're not talking about keeping it comfortable, just keeping the frost off, to keep it 45, but then you have to have large exhaust fans that, as soon as you open the doors and go in, you exhaust a ton of air out, so that if there's any gas buildup, it goes outside, that lets all your hot air out. So, there's a balancing act to make sure that we can keep it warm enough, keep it safe, keep the building up for the long term, so there's kind of a, that's where you guys kind of come in, I guess, is your preference. We'll do whatever you guys want to do, if you want a, a big metal building, and let me just account for air handles per hour, and you know that you're gonna have to replace the, the metal siding in, I don't know, 15 years, or you want a concrete part of the way up, or you don't want a building at all, and you're just gonna disconnect hoses.
If I understood right, the only problem would be outside, get a long spell below freezing.
You'd get your stacking sludge.
Your stacking sludge.
Yeah, that's, so each option has its drawbacks, and the drawback is, if we run into a cold snap, you know, a lizard of 78 or something, I don't know, and you have to sit on that, you can't pump any sludge into that bag, because your hose will freeze. It's not, there's no worry about the bag freezing, the bag can freeze thaw, freeze thaw, freeze thaw, doesn't hurt it. It's the piping, so you can pump it into there, but if your, if your pumps freeze up, then you're kind of in trouble.
What if we had the small building, put the bag outside, and heated, heated the pipes?
You can do.
Wrapped them with.
Wrapped with insulation and things, that's certainly an option, and they have big setups where your piping is heat-traced to keep them warm, and then they're insulated, and then they also have the option that, with a valve in the bottom that you open, and you can let it drain off if you need to, if it gets, you know, we designed those for a certain temperature and.
For the thermostat dump on.
Yep.
See, one of the places I went to, I don't remember whether it was Jameson or.
Jameson, I think, is inside, right, or a building?
One, the dumpster sits inside an open-faced pole mark.
Yep.
The other place, it just sets out on a concrete pad, but their building is nothing more than a 12-by-12 cement block building.
Yep.
And that's where all the treatment takes place, and it's actually a 12-by-24 partition in the metal out of cement block, and the other half of it's for storage.
Yep.
So, that's where they keep the bags and all that kind of stuff, so. And it sounded to me like, talking to the guys up there, that they didn't run water in the wintertime into the dumpster or the, the bag system, maybe monthly, you know, just whenever the, that one pit got full or whatever, they'd cycle through there.
Yep, so that's. Yep, so that's, that leads, so, Blue River, and sorry, I apologize if this stuff is boring you to death, but one, Blue River had proposed a 2,500 gallon sludge holding tank, which would be the bare minimum. I, if, I really don't recommend even doing that small. When we submitted it to SRF, we included a 10,000 gallon sludge holding tank. That gives it a little more room to let stuff, because of, your guys' sludge is, it's a problem, but it is also light and it's fairly thin. So if we get it over into the sludge holding tank, we can let it thicken a little bit, you can pull some clean water off of it, send it back to the head of the plant and then your, your sludge is a little thicker as it goes to the bags, which will in turn save you on the chemical, the polymer as you add to it. Because the lighter and the thinner your sludge is, the more polymer you need to add to the mixture to get it to settle out properly in the bag. So we can send some of that clean water, but your sludge holding tank, so in the winter time, in order to, some of those places, their sludge holding tanks are probably bigger than a 10,000, whatever the number is, 10,000 gallons, that would be the minimum, they may be 20,000 gallons. You have a 20,000 gallon sludge holding tank, which allows you to just go of extended duration like that, keeps it outside, but you sit on sludge a little longer than you normally would in the summer, you can go through it faster because the heat's there.
Yeah.
But those are, again, it's kind of decisions to make, I guess, how-
A lot of variables.
How do you want to handle it? How do you, you know, I, I don't have to run it, so I, you know, pulling hoses off, that sounds like a great idea. But I'm not the guy that's gotta go out there and mess with raw, it's not raw sludge, but that nasty sludge and pull that hose off and then hose down the pad and, and do those things. So I don't wanna be, I don't wanna say that's the best option because you pull this thing off there one time, you'd be wishing it was heat traced and insulated and never had pulled it off before, but there's trade-offs. Each option has its cons and its pros to deal with it. Most of the cons are money related, but that one, the con is definitely, you gotta handle sludge more frequently. Rubber gloves and be cautious and, you know, it's not like, it's gonna make you sick, sludge, but it's, it won't run you. We don't have to make that decision at night, but that's just food for thought as we kind of move forward a little bit.
What, what do you think a timeline is, Dustin?
We are-
For the sewer part?
Yep, so we're gonna fast-track that as quickly as we can, as compared to the water, we're still moving fast, but we're gonna try to move that a little faster. Survey with, the stuff we sent over to them, I would imagine will be out here in the next couple of weeks. I'm gonna push them to be, you know, if they only got a couple of days, that I want them to go down to the wastewater treatment plant, pick that stuff up, get it going and then while they're processing and we're doing all our stuff down there, then they can come survey up at the water, water treatment plant, if my directions are wrong. And then, once we get all that stuff figured out, you know, a month from now, we'll do the force, we can fix the force mains, the least of our worries. Survey wise, we'll figure out a route, you know, whichever street it goes, gotta go down one of the streets, so gotta get there, A to B. And then as soon as, I would like to bid, I'd like to get a permit application into IDIM. It takes three weeks, four weeks, October, I'd like to get a permit in for the wastewater. And that's, once it's into them, it's, it's out of our control, we'll be ready to make any, they're gonna have ridges, there's no perfect design, that they won't have questions about how we're gonna operate it or how, what's this, what's that, that kind of thing, but bid by the end of the year, definitely is our goal. I know that's not as quick as we'd like, but kind of at the mercy of, you know, things out of our control at that point, which would be, I did.
So springtime, this would get started?
So if we, if we bid by, say we bid December 15th, I'm just picking a random date. We would give them the go-ahead in January, so at your, likely your second meeting in January, we'd give them the go-ahead and they would start, there's some stuff they could start there in February and hopefully, hopefully get operational in early spring is our goal. And I know that's not, doesn't sound very fast, but that's, that's fast when you're talking to government agencies and stuff like that. I know that's, we'd like to call Blue River tomorrow and get it ordered, but when they're giving you money for it, you gotta kind of jump through the hoops and that's one we gotta jump through.
And we would have to, even if we weren't getting grant money, given this, back to the sewer treatment plant and IDIM and the state laws on bidding, we would have to do almost all this.
Almost all of it.
But we have to dot a few i's and cross a few, maybe dot, make sure our i's are dotted and the t's are crossed because we don't want to do spend the money and have SRF say, oh, you didn't do this right.
So the water project will follow like a slightly different track, will, will follow all the same rules, but before we bid, we say, SRF, here's our stuff, can we bid? And they would say, yep, you did everything like you're supposed to, even though, even if you miss something, they would say yes and then they would miss something, they'd yell at us. But you follow all these rules, they say yes before you bid and then you bid and then you submit all these documents and they say, okay, we close on Tuesday, you close and then everything's good, you're ready to go to construction. With this, with the wastewater portion, we would get everything in order, we would do the check ourselves. We'd also probably have to stop look at it just to make sure we didn't miss anything. We would bid, we would get the contractor on board, we'd issue all this stuff. SRF doesn't get a say in it yet, until we go to that closing date on the water and they say, timeout. You didn't do this right. Sorry, but you're gonna have to write a check for the wastewater. Well, you already wrote the check. You're not getting a check back, you're not getting the loan money back. That's just coming out of operation. So we need to make sure, we are extra careful in the wastewater to make sure we follow all the rules, get all the AIS stuff submitted, get all these little things done so that they can't say, we're not paying you back.
The additional layer is probably more, because I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here, because this is federal money ultimately. And so you run into things like the, I have an old-
So the new, the new rule, the new fund rule, so the last project we did, American iron and steel, everything had to be American iron steel, well, they expanded that rule, or lovely federal government, and now they call it, I'm gonna say it, I'm gonna get the term backwards, it's BABA, B-A-B-A. It's either Build America, Better America, or Buy America, Build America, something, those, that's the general thing. But it, they don't, includes all the American iron steel stuff, but it also includes new things like some reinforced plastics, some, I don't know, there was something else that was major on there, but I don't remember what it was, PVC, which is not a huge deal because you can imagine shipping 5,000 feet of PVC from China to here, how the cost of that would be. So all this stuff is already stuff that's, you already bought in America, you know, the force mains is gonna, that PVC or HCP is gonna be made in America no matter what. But now we gotta get them to follow the rules that say it's certified and you, you know, that just adds a step on their end, which adds a step on your end, which adds $5 for it, or whatever, I don't know. It adds, it's, they don't do it for free, you know, they, but the rules have to follow to certify that it was substantially transformed in the United States.
So, you know, you'd, it will add to the costs a little bit, yes. It doesn't really impact the timeline, I don't think significantly, but it, it's gonna add a little bit to the cost.
When I spoke with Blue River, he's like, you know, I would think you could just call it the Amish and have them throw you up the building in a couple of days.
The building, absolutely, it was, there's, if it was looking from, looking from a ratepayer, I'm on the zoom, a ratepayer, not on the council or anything like that, and you wanted a building over your, your geo bag container system and all that stuff, maybe you put the, the pumps and everything in a building like you've got, or maybe you just kind of say, we're gonna set it outside for now. Or it's gonna carry it outside when it's ready. Because that's one of, Blue River's options is, for, for places that have plenty of liquid sludge holding, you just pick up the skid, skid, it's like a stall horse or something and you carry it out and you send it up and you run it for a couple of days and then you clean it off and you put it back in the shed. But I would, building a building out there of any kind is not, doesn't require items approval for anything. Unless you start talking chlorine rooms and things that are really hazardous. If, if I was gonna pay for a building over the top of my containers as a ratepayer, I'd free, pay that out of operating somehow. Because you pay it out of operating after the project is done, separate project after it's done and you have the Amish come out and they build the building with an overhead door on it and it takes them five days and it costs a quarter of what it's gonna cost for this. Because it's not, the materials don't add that much. When this project has to be prevailing waitress is David Spake, which means that a laborer, a journeyman laborer is gonna make $32 plus fringes, $48, something, I don't know, the number, $40 an hour and the Amish guy's gonna pay nine, I don't remember. Less than 20?
And that's kind of where I was going with-
You've asked a lot of questions, I'm not answering any of your questions, I apologize.
When we get to the stage where we may wanna have that, I think we did that with something else down there, or maybe we did it in the park when we got some sort of federal money, where we, we ended up building the building ourselves or had somebody come in and-
Park, the restroom.
Restrooms.
You guys did it in the house because it was insane, like crazy money.
Because you're right, building, building through a, a small building like that in a project like this is, is not very, it's costly. But that goes into, if we, if we do a plan, if we do a plan and engineer it so that there's gonna be a building there, then we're gonna have to, then that's gonna be part of the project. But if we say, well, no, we think we're just gonna-
We could set everything up with the plan for a building and leave the proper clearances and lay it out just so that, you know, a certain type of builder could come in and build it around it, that would be, that's, that's what I would think is the most cost-effective. The hardest part of that would be your, your heater and your electrical, but you guys, I think, know probably a couple of people that do electrical work, I guess. For a lot cheaper.
Except get some quotes for it, it would not be-
It'd be a lot easier for process quoting too than bidding. Well, it's a headache for me too, if you care, but.
But there's no money in sewer operations either, so.
Well, you know, it's just, you're running, any of these, all these utilities are just, you know, so every, every, you can't make a, do much with, have anything without running into a rule or requirement or regulation.
And then, I guess that's the other thing, we could, you could plan on after the disconnect hoses and disconnect all that stuff and if you wait a year, you can build the building in a year. You don't have to do it right away, you know, I know you're not gonna build up a ton of funds super fast, but it doesn't have to be the year that the plant's built, because you can do it whenever, since there's, since there's no permitting required, there's no, there's some arguments with Department of Homeland Security, but that's a different bag of work. Don't put a, don't put a bathroom and don't put an office in it and you don't have to have Homeland Security.
The, money-wise, the, the question, if we can shift away from the sewer part of it. You know, five million's a lot of money, but we still have a lot of money to come up with. Now, we're still not sure, there were some emails back and forth today. I, I don't think, I don't know if five million's it, or if five million is where they're starting and, and they're always gonna be in.
The email was very, very vague from SRF.
So, the rate impact, even with $5 million, is gonna be very, very high. Higher than what I think that they would-
It's, I'm not a rate consultant, so I just took it based off the numbers that I had.
Yeah, I did too.
And the, if five million is all you get, I don't think it's very fair to your users. It's, it's a lot higher than I would consider fair from SRF.
So that made me think that they're, I don't know, I'm, I'm curious about this because I had another project that, I, I have not seen this, I had to not get the official email from SRF, but I got an email from the rate consultant that said they're gonna give them eight million of the nine, which is great.
For them.
For them. But I'm like, well, where's the eight million? For, because now their rates are higher than yours now. But, but given the gap, you will, you will surpass their rates if, if they don't give you more money. Now, there is, they had already told us about another million dollars, I don't remember what it was for. So there was some discussion about, well, maybe this doesn't include that other million, and I've had two projects where SRF came in after some analysis and said, okay, we're gonna give you more grant and more forgivable loan, basically, to get that rate bought back down to, to something. So the thing I'm thinking and wondering and I don't know the answer to is, well, do we just say, well, they'll come through and they're gonna give us more money? I do think that, I do think they probably will, but, but there's a way to go here. Or should we also be going back to something we talked about last month or last meeting, going ahead and trying to get some Okra money and putting it in for an Okra grant, which would be six or 700,000. Again, that still leaves you with a gap, but if you get six, 700,000 from Okra, another couple million from SRF, now we're, now we're getting in where you probably need to be on this, to make your rates not astronomical, just unpleasant. So, but if we do wanna do Okra, we need to move with, with some purpose fairly quickly.
If SRF comes through and they give more money and we don't need that Okra money?
They'll take into account the Okra money.
Oh.
I was gonna ask that question too.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, so my guess is, so Eric Smith, our office, is likely gonna call SRF tomorrow for some clarification on, is the five million just the regular SRF money? And then you're still looking at the emergent contaminants and the infrastructure bill money? Or is the five million, give us some guidance?
So once they offer you, say, just verbally, the five million, has it ever been less than that?
That they said five and you said, well, that's not enough, and they came back and said, no, fine, three.
No, or they come back with certain tests, come back and they're like, oh, hang on, five's too high, like, has that happened?
Not that I've seen they, they ever said, they've never rescinded their, your offer.
Earlier this week, I guess, I think it was earlier this week, it's all blurred, before we got the numbers, Eric was already talking to SRF a little bit about Okra and he emailed a lady named Camille.
She's head of-
Inneers?
The engineering side, financial and the engineer.
About Okra and, and she said, yes, we would encourage you to apply to Okra. You know, I don't totally understand how things work at SRF, it's kind of like going in and seeing The Godfather or something, sometimes I feel like where they, you know, we got a little extra money over here. And, and so, you know, I, I don't know that it's going to hurt you to have Okra money too. It actually makes their job of Okra or SRF a little bit easier because they don't have as much, the two times that it happened, one was Hillsdale, one was Dana. And, and it was sort of like, well, you know, we had some money left over from this, so we can put that into it and we can put this into it. And they, they were getting that rate back down, but those were also both projects that had Okra too. And so-
I guess, sorry to interrupt, I guess, maybe, maybe it's one of those instances, maybe not, where they, they say, oh, you know, we offered five million, they realized that wasn't quite enough, so they went, they started looking at Okra, they got Okra at 700,000, well now, that's SRF, we feel more comfortable giving them another 1.3. We're gonna give you 500, another 500, but you realize you do need it more, so you went for more. I, I don't know if they would go away, I have no idea.
I think it's a game either way.
The, the last one was, it was crazy because we got down to the last couple, like last couple of weeks, and it was like last couple of weeks of the year, it was Christmas. And they were like, well, if you could come up with 300,000 more dollars, we'll match it dollar for dollar.
It's like a bidding war.
Yeah, and so we were like, okay, and then, and then they said, at the very last minute, they said, eh, we're just not gonna charge you any interest on the loan either.
So it could benefit.
They, yes, it was, well, it was, it really helps when you-
Right.
You know, so, but I, I, I don't know what the harm is of, of, I can't think of any harm.
I guess that's, you could start the process.
I say, yeah.
You can start the Okra process and if 30 days from now, SRF says, you know what? We feel bad for what we did last time here at 9.28, and you say, you call up your Okra administrator and say, hit the stop button, we're not interested.
There's more meetings, we just do them at your regular meetings. You know, most of the grant administrators work off of, if they get the grant, they get paid, so if they don't get the grant-
If you stop it, they don't get paid.
Yeah, so, you know. And maybe we'll wanna wait and see what, what Eric learns from SRF in the next couple of days, but I, I was pleased that you got five million, but I didn't think it was enough. I think they need to do more, but given the magnitude of the project, so. And, and I could literally, it's not the same project, but I'm comparing it to this other one, it's in St. Brandon. Given the magnitude of the project, so, and, and I could literally, it's not the same project, but I'm comparing it to this other one, it's in St. Berneesh, and, and, you know, it's, it's same, it's a different kind of project, but it's about the same cost. And, and it's got stuff in it, frankly, that is not as health, I mean, it's, it's more like, our stuff's old and we need to replace it. Um, but it's not, it's not health, it's not, um, public safety kinda situation, and so I don't understand why they're getting more.
And this is the same one that, a few weeks ago, it was like we were seventh, or something on the list.
You rate higher than, than.
We were on the list, so good.
Yeah, the list, so as long as you're in the top, and I think that off, when they first issued, it was eleven, so if you're in the top eleven, it essentially just guarantees that you'll have funds available to do the project. So it doesn't say any, that doesn't mean any of it's grant money, that just means that out of the money that they receive, you're eligible for that amount of money in a subsidic, subsidized loan, which is the two or three percent interest rate loan that they offer at the time. Cause there's, there's Evansville's above you guys, or not Evansville, um.
Yeah, but that Evansville's above.
Evansville, yeah, Evansville's above you guys.
There were three or something like that.
So they, so obviously, they're not getting any grant money, so just because you're in that, they call it the fundable range, doesn't mean that you're any more likely to get, uh, a favorable grant than the person that's agents on the list, even though you clearly have more need than that, um, than those communities. What Scott said, it doesn't make any sense how, how you're ranking, I mean.
Well, I, I, you know, the fact is, I don't know where, I still haven't seen, I did not actually see the email from SRF saying that they're getting eight million in grant. So I just got an email saying, hey, we heard, uh, the rate consultant heard from SRF, and they're gonna give them eight million, and I was like, that's wonderful. But, but then, and then I, later on today, I saw your email, Dustin, and, and so I, 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 I was disappointed somewhat.
I'd say, we're not ungrateful.
Yeah, that's what I, I don't wanna come off like that.
Pretty high, so we were hoping to just sit a little better.
And it may just be that we're missing, oh, there's this other million here, and there's this other million, 'cause this is their forgivable loan, so maybe they've calculated in, okay, there's a million grant here, and a million grant here, so you're really.
That's not for, not talking about them.
You're really at seven million, and so.
But only five of it's forgivable, and the other amount will be maybe.
And your rate is not as high as like St. Berneesh's rate is, so I, I still don't know that there might not be some back-to-nap calculations going on over there about if we, if we pool this grant, and this grant, and the five hun, five million, then that'll get their rate to.
It's just scary, I think. I guess, so he can run, take the five million, run it and say, thank you for the five million, but that still puts our rates at, whatever the number, I don't wanna say a number. Puts it at this number, and that's still real sketchy for a lot of the residents of Montezuma to be able to make on a monthly basis.
Right, no, it's not, it's not ungrateful, it's just.
The engineer, or the attorney.
So, you know, Pat, we may wanna get Pat engaged a little bit, and, uh, we'll wait and see what Eric hears from, from, uh, SRF, but, but I do think you should get some consideration to going ahead and getting, maybe we wait till next week, but let's get the ball rolling with, with Okra. As a emergency backup plan.
Well, we don't really have an option if they don't give anymore, right?
Right, no, you guys are.
Not really. No, 'cause you have to do the project, so you, you.
You have to do the project, and not include anything in the project, it's just like, watch, let's, let's take that out, um, you guys are getting.
You gotta figure out how to get it.
A good project, but it's, it's very direct, or something.
We have a bake sale.
You have some muffins later on, right?
You do.
Can you do that with Nesta Park?
Yeah.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, well, that's great news.
Sorry, I, I see I asked for money, but, uh, I apologize for that being a somewhat, uh, like the conversation containing board material.
Getting five million dollars never felt so.
Weird, just, yeah.
That's it.
Again, it's not, it's not ungrateful, it's just.
Your town budget's a couple hundred thousand a year to run most of the rest, not including the utilities, so the five million's enough to run the town for whatever, twenty-five years, and, but it's just enough to get you about half of what you need to do for this water project.
I guess, somewhat side up, you know, does anybody know anybody that has, that's in the town, that has a well on their property? You have one? Could we collect a water sample?
Sure. We did that once, didn't we?
We didn't.
That was, was one of the questions in the, yeah, SRF comments.
It wasn't any better, but.
And it didn't help us anything.
Towns.
Well, it would be perfect. Not for you, but for the test.
We were really hoping it was gonna be this way, and then his stuff came back, and we were like.
Your house is gone, and they're gonna want your house.
How about the RT's, well, you want some of that?
I wonder if it does?
Get a little manganese in your water?
Hey, maybe that's why we got, anyways.
Sorry, that was crazy.
Well, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
We think.
He's like, I'm out.
I'll have better news next time I open. We hope to.
Thank you, have a good night.
Brett?
Well, mine would be quicker than that. We've been doing a lot of trimming around power, and, uh, the guys were down at the cemetery today, Truman, and then we've been doing some trimming along the walking trails too. And Cody and Briar, cause Briar started here, so they've been cleaning, uh, storm drains the past two days, so they've been doing good with it. And basically, that's it. Oh, well, it wouldn't be a bad idea if we could purchase a, uh, power washer, you know, clean vehicles and.
There is one down at that back station. Cause I can't see, it was when Dink was still on the board, he thought there was one located at the back station, that there was supposed to be.
We can check.
Maybe in the road.
I'd like to know what happened to ours then. We just bought one not too many years ago.
Yeah, I've never seen it. But that's just my idea, 'cause we can use it up here to clean the bricks and the ferrite and the concrete too, so. But that's all I got.
Maybe we look for that real quick and then.
Yeah.
Very minimal cost in the grand scheme of things.
Yeah.
If we can't find it, can you have some prices, uh, next meeting?
Five, thirty-two thousand pound, probably.
Yeah, probably.
Marjorie's got some notices.
Gas.
Yes.
Nine left.
Yeah. That's all I got.
How's everything else going?
Going good.
Good.
Good. I think Briar kinda worked out pretty well, so.
He started when, Tuesday? When did he start?
Uh, yesterday.
Oh, yesterday, good.
We're gonna send him to Taro tomorrow to get his first set of sewer shots too.
You wanted to send him his first day.
Hardly a reason.
Traumatizing.
Hope it goes better, better than the last one, we will, we can.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, thanks.
Get his what?
They have to have a series of shots to work around.
They said sewer shots.
It's not something you can answer.
What is it, A?
A.
They suggest a test, it's not mandatory.
Yes, okay.
It's like over a six, seven month period.
Okay, that's great.
Mr. Atkinson?
Yeah, uh, ten runs for the month, I don't know if that takes us up to for the year, that's where we're at with that. Uh, if you haven't heard, uh, myself, PK, and Kurt will be heading out seven fifteen Monday morning, uh, to meet Kyle Coons in Brazil, at the Clay County Fairgrounds, to head south to Kentucky, to Florence, to get our truck. So it is done, it's ready.
Hundred percent ready.
Hundred percent ready. Well, we're going down to get it regardless of whether it's ready or not on Monday, so.
Ready, that fixtures.
Bring back a bright new shiny red rush truck and rescue truck, so.
Good deal.
Put this one, put this one behind us a year and a month later.
Yeah, almost.
Lot, 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 lot of miles on a, on an engine, so, uh, making medical runs for, I'm falling, I can't get up, so, but, uh, that's what we do. Appreciate everything, that's all I got.
Appreciate all your efforts, and all you guys do too.
I have no opinion.
Okay, let's go back to the agenda. Uh, Superior has requested the use of Aztec Park twenty-third of September for their picnic, and their picnic only. They paid the pavilion rental fee, and will be sending a certificate of liability before the event. Thoughts?
Good deal.
I see, make a motion, they'll prove it.
I bet the citizens show up.
They will.
It probably will.
They will.
Tasha was told that they didn't feel like there was enough of a involvement from the town to pay the extra hours and for the bouncy houses.
Well, without the bouncy houses, though, then the town may not, not as many. That's fine, it was nice of them to do it.
Yeah.
Who seconded that, I'm sorry?
I did.
Thank you.
Okay, we got this letter from the Attorney General. And it's about the distribution of the opioid thing.
You know, you don't have to act on anything, it's just information.
I hope that doesn't break them.
Yeah. Two hundred and forty.
Two twenty-seven, um, two twenty-seven fifty-four. And that's how often? That's the whole thing.
That's different from the other opioid, it's that letter from the Attorney General.
The much as they try and explain it, the more I get confused, but there is, there is an amount we're supposed to get every year, for, I don't have them in here.
Allocated and unrestricted.
It's.
Is it restrictive and unrestricted?
Yeah, yes, and if it's under a certain amount, you don't even get it, it just goes to the county, because it's so small, and given the restrictions on it, you can't really fund the drug treatment program with a hundred and fifty bucks a year or something, if you're any good, so. Um, I, and again, as much, I, I've read stuff, and I got, I got several emails about it from other people, that they're trying to understand it, and the more they explain it, the less sense it makes, so. I wish they'd just come over and tell us what, you know. Or just give us the money, and let us do what it is we please, but they don't.
That came out of the Trump administration, right?
Well, no, it was settled by all states Attorney Generals, so, um, it was a class action lawsuit, and, uh, it did happen, you know, when he was president, but, but, um, it's just hard to understand, and there's all sorts, and then, you know, it's, so. I, I will continue, I, I said, I got several people asking me about it today, uh, and, and I haven't figured it out, I had two other people asking me about it today, but.
Did you?
Yeah, so, I wish I could be, maybe I'll figure it out when they'll be able to help me with it so far.
They wrote this up, they don't want you to figure it out.
It'd be scary to see what they want, buy the cover money to go for.
No. So if I do, they must go on my spam.
This is opioid, so.
He can say hi and confuse me, in my opinion.
I wish I would, just I would, yeah.
Well, he sends those updates out, a couple weeks, and I don't understand it.
You don't have to read very far to find hypocrisy, do you? Actually, it's in paragraphs.
When he was saying, guy, he was the best.
Okay, we got an email from AMC Insurance in the Guardians Settlement of the Radio, the fire department radio.
Not following the river.
Yeah.
I didn't, I don't see.
I didn't see that, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
You didn't see it?
No.
Did you see it, you know?
I thought I had it in your packet, it's not, it's probably in one of my piles, but. There are thousands, 'cause they took the quote from the one that was replaced in nineteen, we got our thousand dollar deductible, and approximately three hundred and something in, uh, depreciation, so that leaves a balance of about a thousand, what, six hundred? Cause it's, they don't do a replacement cost, so, my big thing, that's why I put it on the list, and I apologize for not including the email, um, where you want to disperse that from. Cause there's not really, taking it out of the fire department fund isn't wise.
Where can we take it from?
Public security?
Um, no, 'cause that's paying for their life. It's as long as it is, whatever, take it out there, and then we'll take the lights out, general, general fund.
Shouldn't you say general fund?
Yeah, we got the radio channels right now, next year, it'll be the case, yeah. General fund?
That's good.
So, I don't think I, I think I emailed her, will you be talking to me?
I'll probably see him on Monday.
Okay, let me can order it.
You won't be there Monday.
I didn't know if you'd talk to me beforehand, or I can send him an email in the morning, let him know. Is he in part of it?
What you need from Kurt?
I'm just gonna let him know he can order the radios, since we got the check, and you've decided where to take the balance out of.
He's using EMS radio.
Only 'cause he has privileges. Connections.
Okay, Pat Callahan has finalized the gas rate study, he can be here September the seventh to present and discuss. Do we wanna meet with him at five, before the regular meeting, or during the regular meeting?
Are we talking budget at all at me beforehand?
Supposed to, that's why I wondered if you wouldn't want to, plus he's driving from Carmel and back, so let him get out of here, it's up to you guys.
Well, we either put him first, and then move ours with you after, that's a long way.
Yeah. One of them, and eight of them longer than these.
But if we're here, I'd rather do it all in one sweep, instead of having a couple, three different months that we have to do it.
So I'd rather them come early, so he can come and go.
Yeah.
Meeting, and then talk with you after.
In the regular meeting, okay.
Unfortunately, I also have to eat dinner before I go.
I'm good, I'm good to five.
Yeah.
Two or five o'clock.
So the seventh at five with him.
Thank you.
Rick?
Uh, got my electricity hooked up to my shed, and that did not cause the town's electric. It's close, that was the first thing I checked on, I'm not sure that, the wife called me, oh, the lights are out, oh. Life's good up there now, I got my little ruck grinder going, and, uh, the view on Jefferson Street is beautiful. All we need to do is plant some grass now, and life'll be good.
Yeah.
That's all I got. Appreciate everybody's work.
Thank you.
I read John's letter, or about the cemetery, and I, the only thing I've thought about since then, if there's nothing hanging on a shepherd's hook, should it be taken down? You know, if somebody just leaves a shepherd's hook there for a year, to hang a, a hanging basket one time, maybe they oughta keep track of their own shepherd's hook. And I didn't know what anybody else thought about that.
Then would we have to keep a list of who's got an empty one?
It'd be a hard trick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it time, empty ones up or down?
There's a time right now of empty ones.
Is there?
Yes.
Just a thought, that's all I have. Think about it.
Problem is, some people probably only come in town once or twice a year and decorate, and then it sits the rest of the time without anything.
We probably either take it off in the spring or fall, and then it's fit.
As long as it's in the proper place, and it's not obstructing anything, and.
It's that iffy.
Yeah. I looked over a lot of cemetery rules, kinda picking and choosing, there wasn't much on shepherd hooks, rather than just, some people would say, doesn't matter if you have two heads.
There wasn't much on shepherd hooks rather than just, some people would say, doesn't matter if you have two headstones, you only get one shepherd's hook. Some people would say that you get one shepherd hook per, per grave. There wasn't, nobody really breaks it out to empty. But I'll do whatever. We just want to get rid of the bushes and the walnut trees.
Right, yeah. I mean, there are flowers that are going to bloom in the spring too, that. They just come up every year, so are you going to dig those out? Yep. That's, you've got a lot, there's, there's quite a few of that stuff.
See, I saw some surprise lilies up there today. Big copper.
I mean, I'll be honest, the shepherd hook thing doesn't bother me as much as the pine tree between the two. I mean, I don't know. Pros and cons to everything, I guess.
That one's neat. Our stomachs are going crazy over here.
I mean, I wouldn't say, yeah, I mean, I would say if there's three shepherd hooks to want, that's a little.
And there may be even some, like, there's probably a rule or two in there that's repeated. But that's like, work on it for thirty minutes and get up and go do something else, come back two days later and sit down and try to remember where you went from.
Make a progress, that's important.
Well, if you don't have all the minute little listings in there, then someone finds a loophole of something that you didn't add in. We have some stones that are stacked, okay? So it's the, it's the gravestone itself and then somebody has put, this is on a family member. Like the stones, like the yard stones or whatever and they're kind of.
Yard leaning?
Garden stones, yeah, those will have to go off, you know, did that say any kind of a gar- because there are.
It said, it said.
No, where the hell is that?
Yeah, no figurines, no toys, no, which to me, that would.
And that was the only thing I thought.
I don't know if it specifically said.
No added stones or, I don't know.
It's not the, you know. I want to be a jerk by changing the rules, but. Just, it creates too much havoc.
That's right, that's right.
And then when something gets broken, everybody wants to blame us and then we got to answer for it. The simplest thing is to just not allow it.
Right, I agree.
No, that's it, that was enough.
I got a question, I was talking about Okra. What's the gal we use?
Christie Gerald.
Do we want to stay with her?
Probably, she's pretty experienced. Working with SRF along with the Okra.
I mean, she is, she's, I don't know what her schedule's like, she always got them, so she knows what she's.
But if Cindy Todd does it, then she takes her money and splits it with partnership. Yeah, and then she splits it with partnership and that just keeps some of our money local in the county.
Does she work with SRF much?
I didn't ask her that question, well.
Doesn't really matter though, I guess.
I don't know that it matters all that much because.
Decorative stones.
What I asked her yesterday at the other meeting was, do you have time and are you willing to do it? And she says yes. Just going to throw that out there.
I like both of them.
Thoughts?
We were just giving a little input on the cemetery thing, a little bit more verbiage for him. Just what he needs.
In this case, Christie, or using Cindy Todd more local, to keep more money local than. Because whatever Cindy uses, she goes, she splits out of the partnership, Park County, Christie's all goes to her pocket, so.
Is Cindy as experienced as far as that, as the other lady?
She's, she's got a lot of projects approved for the county and Rockville and.
She's been doing it, less time.
And I like Cindy, no doubt about it.
Yeah, that's what she does.
We definitely want someone that is on our side or that knows exactly the ins and outs.
Because they're both good, I mean, they're both good people, I mean.
Yeah, I, I guess we're going to have to decide that sooner or later, a month will get it out of the way now, that's the only thing I thought of.
So, explain again, the, so the money that she gets on this, some of it goes to Park County, is that?
Partnership Park County.
So it stays within our.
And partnership Park County has helped us out on different things that we have done here.
Yeah, there's some we'll still leave on the county.
You think maybe she could give you a list of what she's worked on and.
Is she interested, have you talked to her?
Yeah, I talked to her yesterday. Yeah, I asked her, I said, I don't know whether you got enough time or, and, and even want to. She said she would be interested. No promises for, you know, or anything, I just. Because we talked about four, we're so scared that we went with Christie because of. Oh, was that on, the water?
And Cindy had just gotten her certification, I think, at that point. I don't know if she'd done any at that point, there's a, you have to go to classes for like a week, two weeks and take tests, it's not.
Her hours are up, well, she's, she got one more continuing education hour to do, but. She'll have that done next week, so.
She's already certified, she's just.
Yeah, I mean, there's continuing education out of this.
They probably, yeah.
She's always been pretty good to the town?
And the county, yeah. So we decide.
I'm okay to give her a shot if that's what you guys want to do.
Don't need a motion or anything, do they?
No, well, I mean, not till you get a contract in the end. If that's who you want, maybe, or you can contact.
I can contact her tomorrow and say, get, get a list of what she's done for the county and. She's done, I know she got Universal, she did Universal's water here not too long ago.
No, she, I mean, I, I like Cindy, so I, I got no, I like her book, so. It is, I mean, I. Christie's very good at it, she's, she'll look like a tornado little, I mean, she. She comes in. But she definitely, she, she, she's got more experience and so she, I mean, she knows her stuff really well, but. I don't know that, you know, Cindy's, if Cindy's gotten them, she's done a few, I mean, going to class is one thing and actually doing a few is quite another.
They kind of have an idea of what she's done.
I'll get ahold of her.
That'll help.
And we're, I, I still want to wait to see what we, if Eric gets any more out of SRF and maybe, you know, if they, oh no, we've, we've got eight point five million for you. Then, then it might not be, you know, worth it.
That's the other thing, I'd hate to have it and then let's tell them no and then they get nothing for the work that they've done, is what it sounded like.
You know, I don't know if, if he can glean any more information out of them tomorrow, because it is possible that this is literally just the forgivable loan part. And there's these other pots that we're going to go to for, to get you two more million and so now.
Best case scenario, yeah. Mike Novak talking several times about that.
And they had. I have another email from SRF that they sent to Eric saying about, yeah, you guys get the one million for this and, and something else. And so Eric was emailing, we were emailing today and he's like, well, does this five? Is that, is that that million, whatever you talked about before, or is this?
You did say. Forgivable, if it's not, yeah.
Let's hope that there's, there's more.
Yes, yes.
Not that we're greedy or anything.
It would make sense to me that there's more and I wonder if that's because of what happened with St. Bernice. And so I'm wondering if, if the guy from St. Bernice just already knows, okay, they're getting five million forgivable loan, but they're getting a million for this, a million for that, a million for this, and so it gets updated. And all we got was the email about the forgivable loan. I'm going to stay optimistic about that.
I'm trying.
Well, SRF, I, I will say, SRF has always, we do a lot of, I've done a lot of projects with SRF. Everyone around here goes through SRF for funding and, and they're always very rate conscious about what the rate's going to be. And that's, like in Dana, they kept just, because bids came in high. And so we rebid it and they still came in high. And so they kept offering more and more to try and get it, to the point where, like I said, the, I mean, the loan amount was almost, you know, was. A fraction of what, it was fifty percent of what we thought it was originally, less than fifty percent of what we originally thought it was going to be. And then when you take the interest off and it became just straight principal payback, you know, it was, it, it got their rates to where they wanted to be and they're like, okay, that's good.
Crossing fingers.
Now, yeah, and it, so, I don't know why they feel any different about, and Hillsdale's, I mean, you know, right there. They did that for Hillsdale, I can't imagine. And, and, and Mike's worked with them more than I have certainly and he's always been very confident about us getting a lot of funding for this, so.
I don't have much, just thank you to everybody that I see lots going on, she's probably going to go more into that, so I'm not going to steal her thunder.
Oh, you could have.
Nope, you go.
I was just going to say that the town, I mean, look at all the things that are happening in town. The Jefferson Street, that's amazing, I've watched it a couple days. The church is down and I know that that's not town, but that, that's a change. The guy that was here a few weeks ago, the Gill, that's changed, he's put new white rock down and you can see the river from his place now. So I think that that's going to look nice. Oh, the curbs, the, the approaches and sidewalks have been changed, I mean, like, things are happening in town, it's nice, nice to see. People are noticing, so. Thank you everybody for your efforts. That's it.
I had a question. The other day, why aren't our town employees doing sidewalks? I said, that's a project, don't worry about it. I said, that's, that's not coming out of our pocket exactly, but it's part of a paving project and that's the rule we got to live by.
ADA compliance.
Yeah, complain about getting new sidewalk approaches or whatever, but.
Let the power go out and then come up to the office. People are ruthless. They demand to know what time it's going to be turned back on.
They show up on scene.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, told we got two days.
I was just waiting to see if I needed to flip the breaker because I just, it kept. And I'm like, oh, man, it is what it is.
Was it yesterday afternoon?
Yeah.
Yeah, yesterday afternoon, about two thirty.
They were tearing the church down and.
It's in my two-page newspaper.
Oh, okay. We'll discuss.
Oh, Lord.
You guys have a rule about how long John's report should be, yeah.
Well, I got missed in the.
It's because you don't sit out there anymore. You're at the big.
You're part of the group.
You're one of us now.
Whenever you're ready.
We're ready.
Go for it.
Let's go, John.
So, I'll do the police side really quick because it's simple. Fifty-one calls for service, four citations, one misdemeanor, one warning. We did write-up three seventy-nine E smiles, that's the Wayne Rector property, he's the tenant, Cobb owns the property. Twelve sixty-three, obviously, we know what happened there on Jefferson. The explorers at Clinton Ford for service and some recalls. They're still recalling stuff from two thousand sixteen, seems kind of bizarre to me, but. We did, I did sign the five-year contract with Flock as we discussed, the Narcan box installed on the west end of the firehouse and. Had a one-day training, Monday at Viking County Sheriff's Office. Now the utilities. You have the Escribe onboard, there were some, I was confused on that, so, just so we're clear. Onboard owns Escribe, onboard is more for the private sector, they claim, and this Escribe is more for the municipality, like. So, Jay asked for it, he got the quote. That guy wants, if anybody wants a demonstration, they're more than willing to do it, but. He said that was a starting point with numbers and he would negotiate, so whatever you guys, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but.
Second one, you're talking?
It's a lot. The quote was a lot. The quote was a lot.
Forty-nine hundred dollars for one, yeah. Annually.
But, I mean.
And that's the Escribe quote, yes, because the other one was.
Yeah. Govinda was eleven thousand, I just ended that right there.
Still, I mean, you know. I was trying to think. You know, really, I, I wonder if a lot of this is more than what you need to, because really what you want is, you want to be able to. Pull up the, all these papers and just be able to see them and be able to go through them and look at them. Could you just do that if you had. PDF made of the meeting, if Kathy ran all this through or printed PDFs up in the sim- I mean, it would take a few minutes, but, but, and then we had, you had devices.
Right, and then you could just pull up that file.
It sounds like, once you build the agenda, that. From my understanding briefly, is that, like, her minute time would be cut down extreme because it would kind of populate its own minutes.
Yeah, it does, I know it has, like, it has a lot built muscles, it does.
It's got a vote tracker in it, if, uh. Yeah, there's, I mean, and then, that's the base package and it gets so elaborate that the, the public can get on and request.
The airport, isn't it? What do you call it? You pulled it up?
Yeah, I can, you know, the airport, but I will, I mean, what we, ninety percent of what's done with it is just reading it. And, and, and now it is nice because I can go back, it does have every meeting. So, if something, question comes up about what happened two, three meetings ago or a year ago, you can just, it's touchscreen, so. You go here and you go here, okay, here, yeah, we did, here's that resolution we did two years ago or whatever, it is nice for that.
And it, you know, I could see where it would be beneficial for folks that don't work at the utility office every day to be able to set it home at night and have a question. Be able to research it without taking time out of the next day to come see Kathy, but. Anyway, I'll move on. We made some necessary repairs of the VAC trailer, make it operate more efficiently. The dump truck's still Marty's, actually, the Ford truck is there too. The shifter column's not working at all on the Ford, we're waiting on a part for our Sterling. As long as we don't have a funeral in the next week, we'll be okay, we're going to cross your fingers. Briar started yesterday, as you heard, I meet with RMC tomorrow at ten AM to discuss a plan going forward, kind of. You know, I've got some questions. Kathy found their report of what they were supposed to have done, but I can't verify that they've done it all and just kind of a. This is what we need, this is what we expect, what they, you know, expectations, so. Ten o'clock tomorrow morning.
Who are you meeting with?
RMC. Chad Jenkins and Mike Jeffries. And Duke, I don't know who else in that email, I didn't look, but Duke's needing to take the substation down to add oil to the transformer. It's going to be about a three to four hour outage for the entire town, so.
The last time they came up with that. We had a scheduling process and. Yampa got involved and RMC got involved and they said, set us up a generator. And they decided all of a sudden it didn't need to be done. So. I don't know whether we need to pull her back or just.
Well, at some point, we're going to have to put oil in that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
So when is that scheduled for?
Two AM to five AM one morning.
Daylight. So, to not affect the school. If you do it on fall break, you're going to knock fire out during the bridge festival. So they, they're saying that they'll do it seven days a week, so I'm going to shoot for. So they, they're saying that they'll do it seven days a week, so I'm gonna shoot for a weekend day. So you won't be able to make your Saturday morning coffee.
You better not do it Sunday, people will freak out knowing you're Sunday football.
Saturday morning, I need to really talk to, you know, the song over and see. Just giving you a heads up, so. I've been working through some, I think, GIS updates for utility mapping, that's kind of on my radar, I haven't really got that in depth in it yet, but it's something that's way outdated, and part of that'll go in with the RMC thing tomorrow. The crew tearing down the Presbyterian church knocked a wall down, which in turn took the cable line with it, and shook the poles enough that wrapped the three-phase up. My question is, because I asked some questions, and we've never passed that bill along in the past. That seems bizarre to me, that we would allow somebody to come in and damage our equipment, and we say, oh, we'll take care of it, but.
Would it make people accountable for demoralizing people?
Taking a line there.
Well, maybe I misunderstood.
Well, you misunderstood me, because in that situation, it's never happened before, but I, that's when I said.
I fucking meant overall, like.
No, 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 no.
Because we did your brother.
So we're good.
I know, if it's during workouts, we can't charge for the labor price, right?
No, you couldn't, no.
But we can charge them what RMC charges us, right?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you talked about that.
I've been stewing on that.
Yeah, because they were gonna be a work.
Yeah, we got, we had that, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Then I'm looking for permission to request quotes for that tree on the north end of the cemetery. It's, you know, too big of a tree for our guys to tackle safely. We don't have the equipment or the knowledge to do that safely, so. As long as you guys are okay with it.
See, it's a big one.
Yeah, it needs to come out of there, so.
Maybe a good idea to get quotes to stump grinding, get all these stumps out of the cemetery.
Some point, we do have a bunch of stumps up there.
I have a couple names of stump grinders.
In the park, in the basin, I guess it don't really matter, you just kind of.
So do I, we don't have to have a motion.
I don't think you just have to give us three quotes, correct?
Yeah. And then, really quick, I'm about done, I promise. Old business, the water contingency plan's been submitted to IDAM, I haven't heard anything back last time, Kody hasn't said anything. Employee handbook's still awaiting some human resources modification. Cemetery rules, rough draft was emailed, I made the adjustments that Rep. requested, I've got the more specific request for the decorations. And honestly, that's all I've got, and I'm sure that I didn't think of everything, but.
What'd you do in your spare time?
You know how my brother used to get, when he got stressed out, he'd just rub his head, he'd been doing that.
I go, John and Brad, if you do have a funeral, I've got a dump trailer, so. Well, we can use the Sterling in an emergency situation, but I hate to do that.
Yeah.
My trailer's set there.
Wide and heavy, too, to be taken down, because we usually back that forward in between the rows. So, yeah, hopefully, nothing happens.
Yeah, if it does, don't hesitate, it's all we're having. And that's the second time, is that what you said, that that call?
Yeah, this has happened before since I've been here.
Wow.
So, it's at Marty's.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, thanks for all your efforts, really appreciate it.
Yeah, I really appreciate John, I didn't realize all the stuff that went into it. He's a busy man, and I appreciate it.
Get stuff caught up, and I bet you guys probably work really well together, it's nice to see.
Well, I'm sure at times, I don't know if he's blessed, or feels blessed, that I leave him alone, and I'm not in his back pocket all day long asking him what he's doing, but.
Or if he's worried you're finding more stuff.
Or, yeah. If he thinks I'm over there making lists, or what. So far, all's well.
I know that feeling.
I, I do, I didn't get a chance to look at John's cemetery stuff, he and I had an email about part of it, but I will try and get to that next week. But most of my Montezuma stuff this week's just been about this water project mostly. So I did one, see, I was hoping that, he said, he said he, when we sent the guy the contract, and I was like, when are you gonna start? Or he called you and said he was gonna be here on August fifteenth, and I thought, oh, that's great, so I was excited, like everyone, to see it. So we do need to, once he's done and paid, I'll need to get a copy of the check and stuff, if you can remember thinking about it.
So that's for, starting out the sewer treatment plant?
No, I'm sorry, I talked about the demo.
Oh, the demo, okay.
Because then I have to go back, we'll get a judgment against the owners of the property, who will get upset about it, and then we'll, it'll be, but, but, I really am just interested in, in then foreclosing on that, and having a sale, and then eventually, through some, it'll take several months, we should, unless somebody pays you the thirteen thousand back, which I doubt they do, you'll own it and be able to sell it, so.
There, there's something, kind of, I don't remember all the details on it yesterday, during that partnership meeting, but about the tax sale, no bid stuff.
Yeah, yeah, that's also, and I, I mean, I, I do quite a bit of that, I did send over around Park County, but I did a lot of it in the million. Tax sale properties, they go through an initial sale for the back taxes. If they don't sell at that sale, then they try and sell them for a hundred and fifty dollars typically. That doesn't mean you own it, you pay a hundred and fifty, and then you have to go through a process and spend three, four hundred dollars, and then you, six months to nine months later, you get a deed. So we looked at that a few years ago, and we actually had twelve sixty-three North Jefferson was, was the one we got unfortunate, or, I don't know. They went and paid the back taxes right before.
And they got it from us.
So they, they were able to keep it until now. So it is an option, you know, we've had some success in, in getting some of the, a lot of the ones that the taxes aren't paid on are abandoned orphaned properties that, that nobody's really taken care of or responsible for them. If anybody was interested in them, they probably would have gone to the tax sale and got them by now. So, you know, it is an option if you're interested, the commissioners are, have usually, I'm sure the Park County commissioners would be more than happy to, to assign those certificates to us. There's probably, like I said, three to five hundred dollars, you have to get tied to work, and you have to send out a bunch of legal notices.
So now that.
Jimmy, you got that corner lot by the post office.
So now that we demoed that, can somebody know that that is probably on the tax sale and go get it for just the taxes, and then we're out that demo?
No, because our judgment will, will, will be after the, so, actually, and that one was bought at tax sale last time. Somebody went in and paid the back taxes on it, not realizing.
That what was on it, but that's what I'm saying, if somebody could get it now.
Yeah, but it'd have to go through another, there'd have to be another sale, and I don't know, I actually don't know, I'd have to look it up to see if there's delinquent taxes now, there may not be. I'm sure this year's taxes probably were not paid, but, no, you're, you're right, I do, that's why I do want to kind of, you know, once we get it paid, I'm gonna go back and forward, we'll get a judgment, and then that judgment will be there, and now, in theory, maybe, but I would have to talk to the assessors of the auditor's office and see if it's in the tax sale again, I don't know, when it would be, probably not soon, but I hope to have ownership for you. You know, fairly, end of the year's probably too fast, but early next year. These other ones, though, if you are interested, you know, just, we could get a list and go through it, and.
Might be nice to look at.
See what's there, and, and, you know, I, we did it, I just did this earlier this month, and in Marin County, we went through, and some of them are just vacant lots already, they're, if you're dealing with the whole county, you're dealing with stuff that's, you know, out in the woods. So we did eight total, and they all are properties with buildings on them, most of them are commercial buildings at this point, because the, a lot of the houses we've already gotten, got them tore down and cleaned up. And if you, and, and had some success in getting, you know, we don't get what we, if you have to tear something down, you don't usually get much put in it, but. Sometimes, if it's not like we have here, you can get the teardown done, use your own equipment, and, you know, it doesn't cost nearly as much to do it yourself, if you've got the manpower and the time and the resources, so. But we can look at the list, see what's there, and, you know, yeah. I'll ask the assessor for a list, that's it.
Awesome.
I just looked it over, I mean, the most current one, because I think September fifteenth, the next share of sale, I don't remember seeing that listed.
Something else I was thinking about, just on the fly, but I don't know if he's finished, or, but to plant gra, if the expectation is to plant grass on that lot, we're gonna have to get something in there with a tiller or something to.
He's supposed to seed it, yeah.
He's supposed to?
Yeah, I thought it was part of his bidding.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's that, to reseed and everything.
And all that, yeah. So.
How well it takes, you know, it's hard, no, wish you would have seeded it a couple weeks ago, we've had a lot of rain. It's wet up there.
The other thing I was gonna ask about the cemetery thing, and I know we're going backwards here, but should we put out a notice that says, as of January first, all of these will be enforced, or like.
That's what we talked about.
Like, they need to know that, okay, this is, this is.
Revised and updated.
Revised and updated, and will be enforced come whatever day you're gonna. Effective, yeah. Because if not, you're gonna be, your door's gonna be knocked down.
Oh, yeah, and there's several that's out of town that's got used to the schedule we have now, so that's when they come, and so we'll try to get it out there as much as we can. Rock Hill Paper, Clinton Paper. Posted.
Anything else, Scott?
No shit, bro.
Kathy?
Hey, Jay, can I be redirected there quick? Just one thing I wanted to think about, we don't have to discuss it, Howard, what do you think about making the town the business square itself? Just that one side, both sides of the road, thirty-minute parking zone.
Well, I had quoted.
We can put signs, or we can, or we can, we can white stripe it around the curb, put a blue stripe for a handicap spot.
I had already quoted signs, and did you guys do anything with that? I don't remember, did, you got the quote, but I didn't know if it was.
For the other side of the street.
It was, well, that was the side in front of, or the opposite side of the post office, but.
Boy, you guys better be ready for that. Well, the glow's already thrown down, because I was down there the other morning, and every parking spot on the west side.
All the way down.
The whole, there wasn't a place for you to park a moped out there.
No, I drove by there, then, this morning, matter of fact, I noticed them all, and I was like.
That's crazy, those cars, they almost never move.
Well, in the daylight.
That's what they used to have to do, the mucklets was even open. But some of the older people in town, like Jay and Danny.
Come on, keep going.
All the way back, all the way.
For some of them.
Well, and what did we, we looked it up, and I don't know what I quoted.
We already have the ordinance, right?
But we already have the ordinance that says.
Was it fifteen-minute parking?
Fifteen-minute parking in those spots.
Was that eight AM to four PM?
They have it on the other side, too, because years ago, when Diana, we talked into me, he said it years ago to be done, and it is in the ordinance. I don't know how many slots, but.
Let me see if I have that.
Quite a few right across.
I thought it was just the ones that Jason from the post office, so the only ones that are fifteen minutes, the, it's like the, the six or eight parking spots on that corner. I thought those were the only ones for the post office.
Yeah, but there are no, there are no businesses uptown anymore.
Right.
You know, there's no, you're not gonna park and go shopping at FiOx, you know, it's, why don't make the whole, that whole, the whole two sides of the block.
Well, unfortunately, you have an apartment, but I don't, can they enter through the backs, through the back there?
There's, there's.
Those posts have, you need to be grist.
I sent it to your text.
Are you talking about from the alley there, by the?
No.
The, the utility office, from the bank to the corner, or the whole block?
The whole block.
It's, there's an ordinance on, I don't think it was the whole block that we could do when we read that that day, was it? I don't think it went, it wasn't the whole block, it was three spots from the end, or something like that is what the ordinance said.
Is what we, we, we already have, you know, we have some designated parking, short-term parking areas on Washington and on, front of the Dollar General, whatever that little. But we, if you wanted to expand it, that's up to you guys.
I'm not for it, I've had a lot of complaints.
That's the reason I thought that, you know, if we white striped the curb on both sides, that would point it out to everybody, put a sign.
Like, from eight, eight AM to four PM, or?
Eight AM to four PM, you know, fifteen, thirty-minute water parking, you think you're at.
I think we were planning on, what'd you say, a couple weeks prior to the bridge vessel, we was gonna paint curbs, wasn't that the plan? If you want that done, that would be.
Yeah, that would, well, that would, that would designate it and stick it out.
If you're okay with waiting that long, then.
Rex, if you want to send me what you're thinking.
I was saying after, you know, if nothing else, maybe after the grid.
You know, send me something, show me what you're thinking, like a, just a little, either describe it or write it, or give me a little map, like, even better. Because I, when you say the square, I, I don't know what you mean exactly, so, so. I can write it up, and then you guys have a chat.
Okay, I got your email.
I think I'm on all the other emails.
And then, what I want to hear is, you park, you park from here out.
They can park back there, they can enter from back, there's no reason why they shouldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They do, anyway.
So, I make the most to adjourn.